Okay, our opening meeting at five thirty seven. Counselors Obree and Parker are present. Webinar is now streaming live on custom live streaming service.
Yeah, you don't have to worry about that. That's just sending it to our server so that it records the meeting.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move call to order and we've done a roll call. And I'll ask for a motion to approve the Town Council Rules and Procedure Committee Special Meeting Minutes of March eighteenth.
So moved.
So moved. Any discussion?
No, I think we all said.
I think so too.
So.
Okay.
So we approved, you moved, I mean, I moved, you moved in second. Okay, that's me, yeah. So two zero zero. All right, new business.
Okay. Okay, we've had a request.
Um, are we take, we need to take this in order? The, you're talking about the first, actually, you know, it's okay.
I was gonna go to four point one. Two oh two one one eight eight, change to rule eight?
Yes.
Okay, that is the business that I am about to begin discussion on. We had a request from Counselor Franco. Do I need to write, read into the minutes, the request?
No.
Okay.
Because it's already in our meeting minutes packet and.
Okay. Well. I, I took a look at what she referenced under, I think it was rule number eight.
Yes.
And it was section G.
Yes.
And once a matter has been rejected or decided substantially, the same matter may not be the subject of a referral.
Correct.
Or, or twelve months. Or. Council recommends the referral with six votes in favor.
Correct.
Right. Now, I was, only thing I was thinking, Julia, is, is I don't know if I call you Julia. Counselor Parker. Was up above, it says what you have to do in order to bring something back.
Yep.
So we're kind of being redundant. But the reason we had done that was we were trying to make it clearer and perhaps we made it cloudier.
No, I don't think so. It's a matter, you're gonna, you can't bring the same matter. For instance, we voted on a matter. It's done and complete.
Yep.
For instance, she was quoting the TIF matter. Each TIF thing we're gonna bring forward is different each time, depending on the situation. So that is gonna be a new subject.
Right. New location, new, new.
New, yes.
Yeah.
So any other matters needs a six vote. And the reason why we, she questioned is because there was an error done. So unless we say, unless there's an error that has to be done, or the matter has been brought to attention, because I think there was a clerical error and it had to be fixed, so we had to vote on that subject again.
Okay. Would it do any good to put here, exception would be for clerical corrections?
I guess we could. Once a matter has been rejected, when decided substantially, the same matter may not be, be the subject of a referral. Okay, so you want.
Basically saying that if, exception would be clerical corrections.
Exception. Would be. Clerical.
It would still basically have to go through the process, but the only time that there would be, in most cases, that would be for clerical correction.
Okay, I agree.
Okay. All right. Then we will, we will advise Counselor Franco of our decision.
Well, don't we still have to bring it to, we have to bring it to the whole group, so.
I was about to say that.
Okay. Because there's no, we have to bring it to the whole entire group to vote upon, not just one, so.
No, I was just gonna let her know, if, I don't believe she's with us. I thought she was gonna be, but we'll just.
Inform the whole committee who after we submit our meeting minutes.
Right. Okay.
Yes.
That takes care of our first request. Let's see.
All right, the next one was.
Yeah, the next one is.
Was Madam Mayor's.
Counselor's meeting with staff. Twenty twenty one dash one eight nine. This was, this was discussed at a council meeting. And it was referred by the mayor. And also verbally by the town manager. And I had said that I would talk with the town manager. And the town manager would prefer that all requests to meet with department heads would go through him.
And is, I believe it's in our charter.
As, and we'll put there as per in charter now, as.
Right, correct.
I, I don't know, I haven't read the whole charter.
Thought we found it last time.
Yeah, we did, when you, you found it.
Oh. I did, did I not email it to everyone?
Let me look. Give me a second here and I will look and see if I can find it.
Yes, page is on section point, five point seven.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, and it says neither the council nor any of its members shall direct or request appointment of any person to an office or employment or direct or request the removal of any person from any office or employment which office are, which office or employment by the provisions of the charter, the town manager or any of his or her appointees are empowered to fill the appointment, provided the town manager may seek advice from the council regarding the appointment. The council and its members shall deal officially with the town staff solely through the town manager. Properly constituted meeting of the council, which the town manager has been invited to attend, may call before any employer officer for the purpose of investigation. Yes, this town council should, and its members shall not give orders to any of the subordinates of the town manager, either publicly or privately.
Okay. It's all there for us.
All right, so do we need, we don't need to add that in, do we?
No, we just need to make the notation that as per charter five point seven, it's all spelled out already, that you must go through the manager. And I expect that's the only way that you would satisfy FOIA rules. You know what I mean?
Yes.
Oh. Okay. Are you okay with your notes? We can go on to the next one?
Yes.
Okay, this is the one that I had asked you to research.
I've done partial research and I still need to do some deeper research. Because we're also dealing with budget season and I'm dealing with things at work too, so.
So, absolutely.
So I can only, I, I talk about. I, I am not ready for this. I am honestly not ready for this and.
Well, let me, let me help you a little bit here, okay? One of the things that was brought to our attention is the fact that Andre was using social.
His personal social media account, right?
I'm sorry?
His personal social media account or his?
Yes. He was using his personal Facebook in order to promote what he established, what, what he said was the opinion of the council. And as per rule fourteen, no councilor may speak or give the impression that he or she speaks on behalf of the council without prior council authorization to do so.
Correct.
And he has absolutely broken that rule.
Okay, as we're discussing this, we did not put any disciplinary actions in our rules, by the way, so. What are we looking for an outcome to be?
Um, I wonder if there's any reference in the charter.
I have my charter in front of me.
You wanna see if there's anything in there that references what to do when somebody blatantly goes against the, against the rules of procedure?
Why don't we have?
Does it seem to me that's why we didn't?
Because we didn't know.
So I went back a few and I know, I never, you know, I went back a couple of years looking to see if, oh, I'm sorry, I'm.
He, he just sent us, Mr. Ambrose sent us a message.
Okay.
At the very least, a motion should be made to say he was in violation of Town Council rules for the record.
Absolutely. I have that.
Wait, I lost my page.
If Mr. Ambrose will give us just a couple of minutes, we're gonna look a little further at that, at what we're looking at now. Because I, I'm looking for another thing that I had found also about having to do meetings in a timely manner.
As for FOIA, as per FOIA, and that's probably on our first part of our. And compliance. A copy of, oh no, that's emergency meeting, emergency meeting should be called, that critical. Meetings of the Town Council will be on page one. While we would have to follow what FOIA says.
Well, I think that part of what this would fall under, I'll ask your, your consideration on this, but under committees, it says any subject matter referred to a standing committee which will result in a proposed audience, audience, ordinance. So after adequate discussion, not to exceed sixty days, be referred to the COW.
I meant, which, what page are you on?
I'm on page eight nine of our rules.
Section I?
Uh, G.
G, okay. But there's not a proposed ordinance for the civilian review board, by the way. There's no proposal that has not been brought forth to us. It was emailed from the RTM, which I do not believe they have.
They don't have the right to do it.
Correct, so.
Let's see, RTM.
They are not the governing body to set policies.
Right.
If I'm thinking correctly, and if Mr. Ambrose can confirm that as he was moderator, if that's okay. I'm gonna allow you to talk if that's, if that's okay with Counselor Obree, Chairman Obree.
Yep, no problem.
Mr. Ambrose. Hello, sir. You should be able to talk, sir.
Yes, hello, Counselor, hi, greetings. Jean Claude Amboise here. The RTM rule was the power initiative. That was the only rule that compels to enact some sort of ordinance or legislative action.
Right.
Does it still have to come back and do we have to approve it, or can they just do it? That was my question.
No, I believe, I believe the process, I, I, again, I don't have the rules on me, but I believe it was nine point five in the charter.
Okay, thank you. Wait a minute, I have my charter, that's why I'm asking the question. I, I, I would defer to your expertise because you were there for a long time, sir.
Thank you.
And I thank you for this. The duties of the RTM, that's the budget. The council, failure to adopt a budget, financial powers of the RTM, emergency appropriations, tax bill assessment, assessment expenditures and accounting, um, contributive borrowing.
Did you say, is it, is it nine point five?
Failure to adopt a budget though, nine point five under the charter, that's budget and finance.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm.
Of the charter, you're fine. I, I believe, I don't know who the power belongs to because I was trying to figure out about the power of initiative.
Well, the power, I believe the power initiative, Counselor Parker, has to do with, if they use that rule, then it would go to the town council. And if the town council did not act within a certain amount of time, then it would automatically stimulate a referendum.
Right.
I think it's sixty days.
Right.
So, but they presented it to us, it, the.
If they, if they, first of all, if, in my opinion, my humble opinion, if they were out of order to even do it, it should not have been a duty of the RTM. The ITM is there basically for financial review and suggestions. And if they use the power of initiative to send us something that is financial, then I think, you know, we respond to it anyway, we have to respond anyways. But, but unfortunately, what they've done is they've done the work that our committee was supposed to do. And they now intend to just present what has been done by the RTM. And, but that's, that's a little away from what we're talking about right now, I think.
Well, it ties in together because I'm trying to figure out if. Because they met together and conferred together, if I'm thinking correctly.
Yes, they did help, they did hold joint meetings. And that was up until, I believe, December seventh or eighth, that not every meeting was a joint meeting. But they did hold them until it was approved by the RTM. And there's only been one meeting from the Town Council specifically for Town Council Public Safety Committee, and that was in February early.
Yep.
So this has been in the lap of the Town Council, or at least the Public Safety Committee since early December, with no action, and we're here in, you know, almost, almost beginning of May. But it was, I believe it was still a referral that was on the list.
Oh yeah, it definitely was a referral to our committee and it was not, it, it was not proceeded on properly.
So I did find out, Mr. Ambrose, I did find that you are right, you said four point five. I don't know why I had nine point five in my head.
Oh, you're, you're, you're correct, Counselor Parker. I did say nine point five. I did, so it was my, my mistake.
No, 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 but you were close, but it, it does say the power of initiative. Upon a majority vote of its total membership shall have the power to propose to the council any legislative ordinance or resolution. Except in ordinance or resolution appointing or removing officials or specifying the compensation hours or of work or of officials or employees pension or retirement agreements, or expressly directing the council to appropriate funds. Ordinances or for resolution submitted to the council by power of initials of the RTM and passed by the council, which we have not passed it, without change shall not be subject to referendum of electors in the town. If the council fails to adopt such ordinance or resolution without change within forty-five days after such proposed ordinance or resolution shall have been filed with the council, it shall be submitted to electors who may adopt or reject the same at a referendum held within ninety days after such proposed ordinance or resolution was originally filed with the council. But going back, what they submitted to us is that, because it was that an ordinance or resolution that they asked us to implement.
And you're right, there, there was no ordinance. It was, it's strictly a recommendation.
Okay, thank you. So we didn't have to approve it or.
No, you didn't.
Okay, so I was right in thinking that, sir, okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, there was no power of initiative or there's no ordinance on the books. They did go and review some of those things about having a civilian police review board, but the Cork was what, they recommended a PAC style group, which is what the city of Groton has at this time.
Correct.
Right, which doesn't need an RTM report, and I, I concur with you, Counselor Obree. I do believe, and I did make it known on record to the moderator and the chair of the Court Committee that it was improper for them to establish this committee because it was basically the work that needed to be done by the Town Council Public Safety Committee.
Correct, okay.
Exactly, but we're here now and that, that was one piece of it, of what you mentioned already about the, the use of social media to convey a message that the Town Council is in approval with this, which I don't believe occurred. And the other that I had concern with are the two rules violations for lack of FOIA compliance in the submission of meeting minutes for that committee, which happened in early February.
Okay. All right, I think what we should do, Counselor Parker, is we should request any minutes that were given to the, the town for that February meeting.
I believe they're posted now.
They are posted, you're correct, they are posted, Counselor Parker.
Oh, okay.
It, it goes along with the agenda item for the Town Council Public Safety Mini, Committee Meeting, that's meeting tonight at seven thirty on Agenda Suite.
Yeah, I bet he'd be at that meeting.
I'll be there too.
Good, good. I put in for it also, so, well, I'll be there. All right, I think that, I think we're in agreement with what our recommend, our recommendations will be to the council. Are you okay with that, Counselor Parker?
We can, yeah, oh, well, we can present it, yes, we can present. I'll type it up. I will, the meeting minutes will not be done tonight.
I don't want them done tonight.
I know it has to be within seventy-two hours, so I'll probably work on them tomorrow night and email them to Ms. Hilton tomorrow evening, if that is okay with everyone.
Absolutely.
I tried to do it in a timely manner. I did miss one week where I was five days behind and I apologize.
Don't worry about it. Don't you apologize. You think you do a great job with it.
No, I, I appreciate it, Counselor Parker, and again, seventy-two hours is reasonable. Even five days is reasonable because I believe the RTM rule was, you had to have it back to the town clerk meeting minutes from a committee within six days. This was two months later, and it was only after I had to bring this to the council at public comment that actually something got done, and it still took more days after that.
Right.
Thank you, I appreciate your time as well, and, and thank you for allowing me to be a part of this meeting.
Happy you could join us.
Thank you, Ms. Ambrose.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna sign off now.
See you on Monday. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Parker?
Only, oh, I gotta write him down as a guest.
Okay.
Okay, well, that was easy tonight.
Well, you know, both you and I had looked at it and, you know, I think the only thing that we see with this is that the upcoming council, that maybe we'll have time to do it, I don't know. If we can, we'll do it, but we should come up with what's gonna happen to somebody that just blatantly breaks the rules. You know, how many times can you do it? Do you get sanctioned? Do you get asked to leave council?
Well, that was the other thing because then we would be sanctioning others because then we would have to bring in other certain topics and we were trying to be mindful of how our meetings go. We're still being recorded, so I'm trying to be mindful of how my words. And be on. Because we do not want to further.
I got you.
Okay.
But we probably, maybe what we should do is ask if the council has any suggestions as to whether we should go forward and try to arrive at some suggestions for them on what you do when somebody does continue to break the rules.
I don't know how we would do that. Well, and there's nothing we can do now because it's not written in our rules unless we, I believe we said we would follow matters under Robert's rules. Let me double check that. Oh, I can't even see, I need to figure. Counselor's Charter and Freedom and. Trying to make sure. That's a special meeting, unless we put something in that we have to. Any, any committee meeting minutes, unless we add that in, must be submitted within six days.
I think we already have it. I read that somewhere this tonight.
That's what I thought too, but you know, some.
But we, we still don't have anything about what happens if somebody doesn't do it. You know what I mean? We, we, we need to think about what, you know, what we're going to do. I mean, it's fine to say somebody has broken the rules, but do you write them a letter the first time? Do you read it at the council meeting? You know, I mean, I.
Is it handled privately? I mean, I get, but I, I get what.
We're kind, we're kind of in the air right now, and I think it would, I think it would be good to ask the direction of the council.
So the Rules Committee is making a referral to the committee.
Yeah.
Uh, the council on the whole.
Right.
As a whole.
Right. I might get myself in trouble.
Actually.
As I speak without asking many times.
I, I tried to, I've tried to politely remind everybody, but I, I don't. You know what? Oh, no, it says all meetings shall be in compliance with FOIA. It does not say. Oh, committee reports shall contain the date and places of meeting, the name of members present and those absent, and the fact that one was or was not in a record of votes taken. A summary of discussion where appropriate will be included. Okay.
All righty.
So basically, we don't have to, we're just discussing things, so. All right.
You put it together how you're comfortable with it.
I might have to write out that rule fourteen in the meeting minutes so that people know. Well, no, they can, I can refer them to the book. All right. So. And like, oh, it's on page, did I read it to you about the committee minutes? I did.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't think we have anything else to discuss, do we?
No, I would appreciate a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? You, you're seconding it, right?
I beg your hand.
You have to second it.
I second it.
We're both in favor, because there's only two of us this evening. Oh, wait, I got right down. Okay.
Voted on and accepted at six oh eight.
All right, have a good evening.
You too. Bye-bye.
You're ending the recording?
I am right this moment.
Okay.
I gotta just find the right place to do it.
I got it, you want me to get to it?
Yeah, please.
Okay, stop recording. Yes, we do.